The Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. For the record, today is January the 8th, 2020. Time is 9:00 AM. I wonder if I could impose on Commissioner Kanda to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I happen to have my Pledge of Allegiance tied. I think I can handle it.
Good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And in honor of the new year, if you don't mind, I would ask that you bow your head and we'll have a prayer. We'll start it. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today. We thank you for a new year. We ask your blessings upon all of the county government workings, the county government employees. We would ask a blessing on our military and the families connected to those who are serving. We just ask you for strength and guidance, wisdom as we move through 2020. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, roll call. Madam Clerk to the Board, if you would please.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Yes.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Camper.
Thank you, ma'am. Audience introductions. Ms. Jackie, would you like to start?
Jackie, you go as for the Sentinel. Elliot Jackson, Wednough Tribune.
Jackie, Harvey, Cuskey, Lenny and Zoung.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning. Glad to have you here. Amendments to the agenda. Gentlemen, Commissioner Kanda?
Plenty of amendments, but we've got to talk about a couple of things I can do in Commissioner items.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Prince?
Yes, sir.
I have one. I would ask that we move election of officers up following the audience introductions. So I would move to amend the agenda by moving election of officers from new business to follow the amendment of the agendas.
New business, wasn't it?
Senator Administrator.
Sorry, I said new business. That's not correct.
Oh, so you want to move it up to where?
Right after the amendment to the agendas. It's been moved a second to amend the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay. If you carry it. Thank you, sir. Sir, appreciate that. That was the only agenda item that I had for amending the agenda. So let me correct this then. Okay, so that is the next item, election of officers. It's a group pleasure.
I know that we continue in the same officers that we've had. Chairman Flower, Vice Chair Kanda and Sir Prince, I mean Commissioner Prince.
As a member, I would second that. Been moved a second to elect officers. Chairman Flower, Vice Chairman Kanda, Member Jay Prince. Discussion.
I've got a couple of items just to discuss a little bit about it. Appreciate the prayer because I believe by the grace of God, we're here representing this county and it's a privilege and honor and I really think we've turned into a great team as a result. Couple, there's a couple glitches that I see that I'd like to talk about, but not probably during this time.
Okay.
But I would like to ask, you know, because we represent different districts, we are accountable to our people in those districts first of all, and then to the county as a whole, bring us all together. I think we've been doing a pretty good job of doing that. When is it appropriate to take advantage? Right now, we have our own areas of interest that we're responsible for, which is a good thing that we, and that enables us to divide our time evenly between us and use us most effectively. When should we change the chairman if it's appropriate? What criteria is there? Is there an advantage? I see Tom's been doing above and beyond, I think, in a lot of things that, you know, I don't know how you get out and bring things from outside the county into your district or into the county if you, if you're tied up in effect being a county sort of. Some of the things that de facto, the county manager in some aspects, because you're here working a lot of issues, you really do, that don't necessarily require a board decision to do things, but you take them on and I'm worrying about you, you know, I'm worrying about time and what's the right thing to do. So we ought to probably have that discussion at some point that would make sure from a county point of view. I haven't had a chance personally to get out to legislative session. I think we need to do those kinds of things and understand the red flag laws, bring them to the county ahead of time, let's understand where we stand, you know, I would like to do a better job. And so I'm just trying to, maybe Jay and I need to help share some of the load in order to free us all up to do those kinds of things. And that's, that's the, you know, just a discussion point.
Correct.
So I'll take advantage of, you know, I think what I really like is your knowledge of Robert's rules, which keep us straight. But sometimes it bogs us down too, if we don't act on them quicker. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Appreciate the compliment. The discussion, you know, it's up to the Board of Commissioners to elect the chairman and vice chairman when it's appropriate to do, which is generally the first meeting of the year. So I'll be honest with you, I look at it as...
You know, I'd like to see the vice chair be some help and Jay too on some of these issues.
Yeah, and I thought maybe it would be fun and interesting to maybe ask each of the commissioners to chair meetings throughout the year. Certainly that would be appropriate.
Well, or if you're busy doing something, that's in your absence, but maybe there's other things that paperwork wise, then we ought to be taking on.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that. Not that that has to do with the chair necessarily serving as a chairman or officially serving as a chairman, but yeah, it would be nice to split the load a little bit. And as you say, thank you. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of Commissioner Carries? Thank you. Appreciate that. Prove of minutes, we do not have any. Or if we do, I didn't get them.
I sent them, but we put them on the agenda next week.
Fifteenth.
Yeah.
For the 15th. Okay. Yeah. Trying not to bog this agenda down anymore than necessary.
It's fine. I just saw it online.
Yeah. Should have deleted that, I'm sorry. Commissioner items. Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin, sir?
Sure. Happy New Year, everybody. I attended the, Friday the 3rd, I attended the annual operating plan.
Oh, good.
At the Fire Department. Joe Lobiondo.
Lobiondo.
Thank you. And it was very interesting. Basically sanctioned, modification, nothing terrible. Yesterday, I attended the ambulance EMS committee. Considering that Heart of the Rockies has stated multiple times that they're not in the ambulance business, nor do they want to be in the ambulance business, the committee felt that it would probably make sense to go ahead and form a separate taxing district for the EMS.
Countywide or?
Countywide, yeah. It will not be a district, it'll be for the county, but EMS will do their own thing. I thought that probably made sense, you know, they would break out because I mentioned to them that we as commissioners had concerns and that we just signed in the last meeting, the mill levies, and we'd much prefer to see it broken out. How much is hospital and how much is EMS? And they agreed that that's problematic. And now with the change with Heart of the Rockies, they felt that this would be an opportune time to go ahead and bifurcate the EMS from the, from the hospital district and have its own standalone. The discussion was, of course, the entire county, not just the district that the hospital has right now. So that's just, and that's just discussion. They're going to bring it to their board on the 30th of January this month and see what their board feels if that's something that they would entertain. So I was mostly just listening and talking, you know, to what they had to say.
So how's that going to play in with our meeting down in Wetmore?
Here's what they, here's what was decided at the meeting. The meeting in Wetmore was going to be within the next week or two. They, and I'm part of it, we thought it would be best to go ahead and put this off until the beginning of February so that we could go down to Wetmore and say, we're working on a plan to segregate EMS from the hospital district rather than say, we're going to ask to do this. We thought it would make more sense to go ahead and go in with an absolute, with an actual plan as opposed to, well, here are our options and that type of thing. So the discussion was to postpone that meeting until the beginning of February since their meeting is the last day of January or September.
Postpone which meeting?
The Wetmore meeting to discuss, you know, what are we going to do?
Yeah, that'd probably be a better idea because it sounds like they're coming down the right path, give me some time to work it through.
The real key is to have the hospital board itself say, we sanction this, we agree with you, go do what you need to do to form your own hospital district, excuse me, EMS district. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. So they're planning on discussing that at their next meeting.
And that would be a separate district under whose purview?
It would be a separate special district that's going to have its own taxing authority. Exactly correct.
Or it could be the way it was set up originally under the commissioners as a different budget item that we would also raise the mill levy for.
Certainly a discussion item.
We need to make sure we, look at the options, I guess. Or the hospital district could take it on if they wanted to.
Hospital district does not want it.
Yeah. But we're just being open minded about it here, trying to...
So is, is this a possible solution in addition, in addition to hiring AMR? Is AMR's, is that discussion still on the table or is that getting shuffled down?
Somebody would have to...
It's definitely shuffled down. I am not pressing AMR at this point. It's, it's quite evident that the people I'm dealing with are not in favor of AMR. However, I said to them that it's an option that the commissioners would like to look at, you know, and kind of the plan is, like I've mentioned before, let's get 2020 fig, during 2020, we can work with AMR, but let's get a plan in place for ambulances to cover the entire district in an emergency. And then, once we have a plan in place, then we can open discussion on, is AMR a better choice or not?
And that would have to be done in time for the election if we're going to go after...
Right, that's going to be in November. That's why we want to get the board to say, yes, you can separate, and then the question would be, separate from the current organization or separate with AMR running it?
So, so some organization would have to hire somebody to run an ambulance. It could be the crew of the organization currently doing it under some other authority.
The special district would have its own board and would have its own regulations. It would be totally, it'd be like the fire department, it's a totally standalone.
Sure, I understand if it were a special district. If it's not, if it were under the hospital still district or if it was under the commissioners of the county, somebody still has to hire a ambulance, even if it's a special district.
Service.
Service. And that service, your, your, the way you're telling us, could also be the same service we have today under a different authority.
Correct.
Or through the hospital district.
Or it could be AMR.
Or it could be AMR or it could be competed with somebody.
We don't have any answers to that. The real question at the moment is, does it make sense to break off EMS from the hospital since the Heart of the Rockies has made it very clear they are not in the ambulance business nor do they want to be?
Right.
And the issue would be, if they, if they didn't do that, then the mill levy would still go to the hospital district and somehow that would then get back to EMS. It's very pragmatic, the way it's set up. So I suggested this is the perfect time to be a special district and have your own, have the taxes come directly to you, have your own board of directors, have your own accounting department, have your own budget and run it yourself or the commissioners do it. So...
Or we hire...
We hire AMR.
Sure, get hired, get hired.
I give you my personal opinion, and I know it's generalizing a lot, my personal opinion is AMR is the right way to go. They have higher skilled individuals on the ambulances. I don't know if they're higher skilled, they're higher level educated, okay? And that doesn't mean someone who's a lower level, been doing it for 20 years and not as good as the best, well, you know what I'm saying. So they always have a better person on the ambulance. They also have ambulances closer to the eastern and maybe the western portions of our county, southern portions of our county. They potentially have ambulances closer than we could if they ran out of our barn. So it, there's a lot of reasons why I think it makes sense to go to AMR. The other thing is, the mill that currently goes to EMS, it's, it's three mil from the public and a half a mil that the hospital district pays. That's going to go, the half a mil's going to go away when Heart of the Rockies says, we're not going to give you any money, we've got our own problems, we're a for-profit organization. So the question's really going to be, what is going to be the best for the county? And ultimately, my heart tells me AMR's the right way to go, but considering the history of what's going on, I think they have an opportunity to do this, phase it in. So I think as soon as we have some resolution on what are we going to do with separating, then we can start in earnest the AMR discussion. But I will tell you, from discussions I've had with the people that I sat at the table with yesterday are opposed to AMR. And they have lots of reasons.
Yeah, they may be bad, baggy, fat or whatever.
But they have lots of reasons.
I don't think it matters. I think what matters is going forward and what's the right thing to do.
Here's what matters. What matters is what is the best service we can provide to our constituency at the lowest price. That's what matters. And if someone's going to have their feelings hurt, I'm very sorry. It's like terminating employee who doesn't do a good job. You just have to make a decision sometimes.
Yeah, I just wonder if moving forward with this whole special tax district thing is going to muddy the waters terribly if we're going to still consider AMR as a possibility. Obviously, if that tax district is formed, then there's a good chance that it will operate just like the fire department. Commissioners will have nothing to say about it.
Right, that's why...
Well, that's a concern for me.
But that's something we don't need to talk about now because that's the point of the next meeting after the hospital board gets their decision made formally.
Right. I feel it's appropriate to, to break off since Heart of the Rockies doesn't want it.
Well, that's the problem. How you establish it after it breaks off?
Money's coming from and how it's going. The budget is convoluted because it's mixed in with the hospital. It's, it's not a very clean...
I agree.
...operation now. Now, if we feel, the BOCC feels that this is a BOCC thing, well, then we probably ought to step in and say, we're taking this over and we ought to handle it. That's a discussion we ought to have, and if that's the case, let's move forward with that. I don't have a problem. All, here's what I care about. I care about getting an ambulance when someone dials 911 anywhere in the county and getting the best value for our constituency. Other than that, I don't care how we do it.
Yeah, best value doesn't mean cheat this price. It just means...
Not necessarily. I'm not going with the cheap stuff, I'm going with the best.
You said it then.
Best value.
Accidentally.
Yeah, I guess if I had to say, what is my biggest concern in that is to have the highest level of competency on those ambulances when they run.
Right.
That was the first thing I said while I'm, I said to you, I'm not heading around the boat, I told you, I'm in favor of AMR, and that is the main reason, a higher level of competency on the ambulance.
So special districts, council commissioners set those up? They have to approve those or not?
The commissioners have to approve them, but they, they really don't take the initiative to set them up.
I like that.
That's done separately, and that would really require somebody hiring an attorney to do it. It's beyond my expertise to do all that, but yeah, it would have to go through and then it's got to go to the voters and, I mean, there's a whole lot of, there's a lot of hoops to jump through there frankly. I mean, just my two cents worth real quick is that it would be better, I think, for EMS to be a department, just like Rockbridge or something else where you have the authority control it and, you know, then all you have to do is have a, in November...
Establish a mill levy.
Yeah, establish a mill levy for the whole county. You know, it's 3% now, and if you want 3% for the whole county, that's easy to do.
Right.
And then you control it.
And that in effect is...
You can contract with AMR, you can hire the ones that are already here, you're in charge of it.
And that goes to the voters, the mill levy?
Yeah, the mill levy, we go to the voters.
Because we're increasing the county budget, decreasing the hospital budget.
Considering the election is in November, which is, sounds like a long time.
Pretty close.
It's not. So I would think we, the three of us, need to sit down and determine how do we want to handle this. I am absolutely not opposed to what Clint was saying. I have no issue with that whatsoever. Obviously, the hospital district at the moment and the EMS will not feel that that's appropriate, I suspect.
When is the hospital meeting?
January 3rd.
Because I don't want to do it before that meeting.
Right, I don't want to do anything. I mean...
Then we can get together after, we get debated from there and let's, let's see what we got to offer.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it certainly makes sense, and I think the statutes that we looked at give each of the organizations, either the hospital district and the BOCC, equal rights.
Right, we can decide to do it or not.
So maybe, I mean, right now is the perfect time to do something because the Heart of the Rockies integration into our system, and they've, they don't want any part of it. So now is the right time to do something. Now, I mean, this November of the election when it comes up.
And it's a merger schedule, do you know with?
They haven't even signed it yet, believe it or not. I didn't realize that. Yesterday, I learned that. It's a slow integration. They're not going to replace Ms. Drew. They're not going to have an executive director. They might hire a lower level manager. This is the questions that were said yesterday.
That's something that has to be, we'll probably all want to go to those meetings because I kind of get upset a little bit about an organization outside the county telling us they don't want to do something for the county.
It is...
Has emerged, you know, you see what I'm saying? It comes across that way.
You are 100% correct, and that is the only reason, we're in the middle of this.
I know, and that's why...
If they would have said, you know, we're going to send an ambulance down there...
All of a sudden, we're merging with an organization that doesn't want to support the county.
I mean, in my whole time as a commissioner, until they said, we're not going to send ambulances to our constituency, I did, they were off my radar.
Yeah, it didn't even cross my mind until it came up. After, it was too late.
But when they said they weren't going to, that's when this all occurred. So you're 100% correct.
So who's going to make the final decision about whether a tax district's formed or not, in your opinion?
I think what, I think the suggestion is to go to the hospital district and say, we would like to separate and form our own special tax district.
Or we take it. Don't, don't come to the conclusion yet.
But that's the conclusion as of yesterday, right?
That's what they want.
They want to go to their hospital, West, Custer County Hospital District and say, we want to break off and form our own special district. Are you okay with that?
That's okay.
And that's as far as that.
Leave it at that and then...
But if the district, hospital district or the clinic says yes, is that the final word on it? Because if it is, then we're done, we're out of it.
I don't think there's any final word on anything.
Who does have the final word?
They're not agreeing to a special district, Tom. They don't have the authority to set up a special district.
This is a legal question, who has the right?
We do.
Well, so does the clinic.
But if you look at the two statutes that Clint found and you read them both, except for a word or two, Clint, please help me, I believe it says both of us have...
We have the right to, and they are not wanting to do it, so that leaves it up to us to make a decision. Do we want to do it or do we want to set up a special district and let somebody else manage it?
And I will not argue that.
And that's a decision that has to be done later.
And that's why I suggested we ought to get our act together and decide what we want to do.
After we see that.
Do you want to do it before or after?
But if it's after and the clinic says, yeah, we'll set up a tax district?
No, they say you go off and somebody, either you take it counting or set up a special tax district.
Well, that's not the conversation. That's the problem.
But the conversation is just, is very simple. They want to go and ask if they can break it.
They want out. They want to unload it.
Right, they want to do their own thing.
So they'll make a decision to unload it, then we take on the next step.
We feel we need to do something to make sure that, that we're in there. We ought to do this before, before their meeting.
That's what I think.
Here's how we're going, here's what the BOCC stance is.
Well, sure they will.
May I ask just a quick question?
Go ahead.
When you say "they," are you talking about Beth, saying to Beth Arjola to let it go, form your own deal or, I just, the pronouns are confusing for me.
It's a very fair question. When I say "they," I'm lumping together the hospital district and the EMS. And the people I met with yesterday were Tom Shepherd, he's a board member, Jenny Candelara, she's a board member, Beth was there, and an EMS man, I forgot his name. He's a little bit elderly with blond hair, very nice guy. I can't, I'm sorry, I slipped his name. So I kept saying to them, "they" and "us," and what I was saying is, "they," hospital district, EMS is one circle, BOCC. And I said to BOCC is not, you know, I didn't go there to approve what they wanted to do. I went there and discussed with them Wetmore. That's all I really care about at this point.
Well, in all due respect to our agenda this morning, I'd like to curb this conversation.
Right, I agree with that.
I would also like to suggest we schedule a workshop on January 15th where we can continue this very discussion.
No, a different day.
Okay, 15th and work.
What?
I only said that because I know where you're at.
Yeah, I have a, I had a previous appointment set on that day when then we moved the BOCC through that day, and I'm fine with that.
14th?
Wait a minute.
16th.
Do you want to talk about this first?
Can I throw my two cents worth in here? I, and I'll have to do some research, but all the other special district files that I have, when they started that special district, the people, they had to get a petition.
Correct, they know that.
And they know that. So the, they did a petition, then they came to the commissioners, then they went to the court, then it went on the ballot.
Correct.
So it's kind of a long process too.
Correct. That's why they're anxious, and that's why they're anxious to get it done at the next, their next meeting. I didn't tell them, I think this is a wonderful idea. I said, it makes sense for you to break off because if there's a, you have a parent organization that doesn't want you, go do your own thing. I said to them, we, the BOCC, do not like signing the mill levy. How about Monday the 13th?
Not good for that.
I have a bit, you know, the 13th, that's okay.
9:00?
I got a doctor's appointment that morning. You do it in the afternoon.
1:00? Should be better for me, actually.
Sunday the 13th?
Here?
Yes.
This is the board room.
What we, what I could suggest for this meeting, we ought to try, Clint, to understand what rights we have and what we don't.
And the process of how we would do it.
Yeah, I'm still a little fuzzy on who's, who really is in charge of this.
I have some thoughts I can share that workshop.
Maybe we can do a little research between now and then. Okay, good. All right, so...
May I ask, I'm sorry, what times?
1:00.
1:00.
On the 13th, January 13th, make a note of that, Mr. Carr, so we can post that, Commissioner workshop to discuss ambulance coverage for the county.
It's accommodating that day for me.
Pardon you, Beth, no problem.
And I know it sounds like I'm really pro them, believe me, it does not.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, and I can reach out to AMR and see if we can get something in writing from them for that meeting, at least we can consider that as well, so.
Okay, anything else, sir?
No, it's, okay, Commissioner Kanda?
I'd be a little careful talking to AMR, Tom, until we get, you know, we don't want to have them with the expectation of, you know.
Yeah, well, we've already talked to them once, so, we just never got anything in-
I think we just need to work the governmental process here. Alright, yeah, as far as the cost and all that.
Yeah.
Okay, two, two things, I did have a meeting with the Fiber Optic Boys, Carmel and his crew, to see where we were with the process of working on the three steps or four steps that are going to happen, get the grants and move forward. So they're gonna, I asked them to get a plan together, a structure, what are they doing, so we can take a look at it as a team, with us, the towns, together, see what the program's going to shape up to me. And I'll get that to you as soon as I get them, and we'll get Tom, or get the two board, mayors together with it too, at some point, but for the end of the month. I also had a meeting with the road, by highways and byways guys, Jimmy Little as well, and then we're talking about how this has progressed since ninety-four up till now, it's become quite a big deal, and a lot of people, and the county's been benefiting by the scenic byways and the tourism that has resulted in the result. And so they asked us, and I'm part of the directors of that, so I thought it was a good idea when I talked to Jim, and then Jim sent that letter to all three of us. So I'll, I will, I've got this bullets I want to put into a note, and it can be email or, or we can mail it to the group that is going to have the meeting on the twenty-first of this month down in Pueblo. And that would be a good vocalizing, our support, if you guys agree that we support that with a, a letter, and I'll coordinate that, and I'll just pass the letter through, and then we'll get a hard-
Do we need to put that on the agenda for the fifteenth?
We could, and, and then finalize it then, and then I want all three of us to sign it, a big show of support.
So that would be, consider letter of support for scenic byways.
On the fifteenth, or did you mean, are we meeting on the eighteenth, or the-
Fifteenth.
When's the actual, we haven't set the board meetings, have we?
We have already voted to have it on the fifteenth.
Was it on the fifteenth?
Well, that's right. Away from today, and then we don't have any plan here.
Yeah, that's-
Well, we voted on three, all three in January.
Yeah, we did do that.
Thirty-first.
Oh, thirty-first, yeah.
Yeah, so that's good, I'm good.
Okay, good, where was that meeting with scenic byways?
It's in the museum down there, you know, in Pueblo.
That's where you met?
No, I did, this was a telephone call.
Oh, conference, okay.
Yeah, and that meeting will be down there, in Pueblo, I'll, I'll write a go to that on the twenty-third. I missed the last one.
Okay, anything else, sir?
Uh, let's see, no, I got another item, I'll wait till the end of the whole meeting, I don't need to work, work and get right now.
Alright, so I'll go through some things relatively quickly here, the conference table, obviously didn't happen today, I have two coats of finish left to put on that, so we'll bring it in.
Where is it?
Friday, so.
Need some help.
It's in Mike Smith's woodshop.
Is it?
Yeah.
It looking good?
No, we'll get it, yeah, I think it's going to be fine.
You're going to fit?
So, it's narrower than this table, so it should fit, yes. Sorry, I don't know why that just happened, and then, I think we need to conduct employee evaluations on our maintenance and our custodial position, I kind of looked at Jay, he's a point of contact for human services, do you want to, are you okay with that, Bill?
Yeah, you should do it.
Uh, we're six months past due on the custodial, so I'd like to see us get that as soon as possible, I can visit with you a little about where we're at, currently on salaries and that kind of thing.
Does Ivan do maintenance at EMS and the clinic?
Yes, not the clinic, well, he does on a separate job, not for us.
Okay, but, because, I mean, EMS belongs to the clinic also, I mean, it's not our bit.
Yeah, you said EMS, I was thinking OEM, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, he'll do it on that bill.
But he does it under a separate agreement.
Exactly.
Okay.
Airport county.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, also wanted to have a discussion quickly about disposing of some county property, most of it is old desks and chairs that are downstairs in the basement, it's become a dumping ground, so I would like to get rid of a bunch of that stuff, in my opinion, I think-
Is it junk, or is it-
Most of the chairs are, have something wrong with them, they've been replaced with newer chairs, I'd like to set them out by the annex, put a free sign on it, and let people take them if they want them, it's better than putting them in the landfill, I don't think they're worth trying to sell in an auction or put out a request for bid on-
Jackie had heard that old desk out there, that's historical.
I like the idea of putting a free sign, but also, there's a fellow in town named Bobby.
His what?
Bobby is his name, he's a junker, he would be happy to pick all this stuff up at no cost, maybe we ought to give out what we can, whatever's not picked up.
Let him take it to the scrap iron instead of the landfill.
Yeah, he recycles it all.
Silver Cliff also asked me if we had an old desk that they could use in their county, or in their town shop, and there is a government issued desk down in the basement.
We let them come and take first.
I'd like to give that away as well, and I just, we just donate that to the county, so by consent, if you're okay with that, I'll continue to move forward, Mr. Jackie, you got a comment?
Bobby came and picked up a bunch of electronics for free, I, my suggestion is just give all the chairs to Bobby, and don't clutter up the free stuff, because we had that free stuff out here, and we had to, one piece left, and we had to haul the rest of the landfill after it blew over and it snowed on it.
Right.
And it looked awful.
Okay, good.
Out my window.
Okay, alright, so I'll move forward on that, we'll get that cleaned up.
I want Bobby's number for other reasons, I've just got his number.
What if you put a ad in the paper?
We could, just say on-
For thirty days, and then if it doesn't-
On this week, it's going to be out there.
Come and pick them up, but with the free sign on it.
Yeah, but you'd have to take people down there to see it?
No, I think the approach there would be, set it over there, say on this day, there's going to be some surplus county.
Come and get what you want.
Then who does the actual physical labor of hauling it all over there?
Ivan and myself would do that.
But Bobby would haul it.
We've got to get it out of there, but I don't have a trouble just letting a scrap iron guy do it too, I don't care, but I'll, we'll deal with it, if that's all right with you guys. And you're okay with donating that desk to the town of Silver Cliff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, thank you, appreciate that. So the new conference table will come in either Friday or over the weekend, depending on the help, I can get rounded up to bring that in. I did sign a check for the skid steer for the landfill, it is on site, and I believe that check's going out in the mail this week or next.
I think it should be, yes, yes, yes.
And then I, also, my calendar, I, I don't think I'll spend a lot of time on that, I did attend the American Legion meeting last night and gave them kind of a state of the county thing, where we're at on progress for silver projects, I thought I had a good, good little meeting with them as well, so, that's about all I have, questions, comments, questions?
What do we do with this noise?
Uh, it's going downstairs for now, because they can use it for election judges.
Yeah, I was going to suggest not giving this one away.
No, that was not my plan, we were going to take it downstairs, good question, thank you. Okay, anything else, gentlemen, commissioner items, attorney items?
The only thing I've done since our last meeting was prepare a proposed resolution twenty dash zero two for the county to accept the roads in Cuernavalle subdivision that Gary Height says we're already maintaining and repairing.
And do you have that available today, the fifteenth?
Yeah, how am I going to handle it?
Send it to Kara, she can forward it to all of you to take a look at.
Okay, so we need that on the fifteenth agenda then?
Right.
So consideration of resolution twenty dash zero two, acceptance of county roads in Cuernavalle subdivision.
Was it just half off?
Yeah, I think it's already on.
It's already on, okay, alright.
He's, Gary's working on a list of all the other roads.
So he can accept all the rest of them?
Well, we'll have to probably do that by a separate resolution.
That they're doing now, right.
Right, okay, alright, good, anything else, sir?
No.
Thank you, appreciate it, administrative assistant items, nothing?
Come on, you got something, tell us.
Any old business?
Anything.
I don't know.
I have no old business, gentlemen?
No.
We'll move on, new business, I'll public comment on anything that is an action item. The first item of business I put on the agenda was ratifying the chairman signing the V S O report, since we did not have staff reports, he came in and said he needed to send that report, he had a deadline, I signed it, so I would move to ratify the action of the chairman signing the V S O report. Been moving, seconded to ratify signing the V S O report, discussion.
Thanks, gentlemen.
You're welcome, public comment, you have a copy of that as well.
I do, okay.
And we had it last time, too.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries, action of signing that has been ratified.
Quick question, just because you've mentioned old business, what is old business?
Old business-
We did, we had an argument about that before.
Well, it's no argument, it's very clear, old business would be any item of business that we were in the middle of that was disrupted by some kind of an emergency, a fire-
Right.
-illness, that we just had to say, "You know what, we're stopping it right here, we'll carry, we'll deal with it."
So the point that, what made me think to ask that is, then it would be on the agenda, because we, asking us if there's old business?
It really is, and I'm being polite.
Yeah, I know, don't be polite, let's just get there.
There is, there is, so, if you're good with that, typically the chair would say there is no old business, we move on.
That's right.
But-
It doesn't really matter either.
Yeah, a lot of people think, "Well, we're talking about something, we never decided it, so it's old business," that's not the case, no.
I thought we changed that to unfinished business.
It should be unfinished.
That's what I thought, too.
It got lost in the transfer, so instead of old, it should be unfinished business, that's correct.
Right.
So, and really-
That's what makes people think they can do that.
It would be an item of business that was never brought to completion due to an unforeseen emergency, is how the Robert's Rules clarify that.
What about table?
Those are different, yeah, that would come back under new business.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, typically, we would table an item to a specific date, or we just table it, and if it's tabled, it stays on the table until somebody brings it off the table, and that would be done under new business. We really, technically, we need to have another line under new business to say-
Is there anything tabled?
Additional new business, then if somebody, because tabled items wouldn't be on here.
You're right.
Then when we get to that, we'd say, "Are there any additional items of business, Mr. Chairman, I moved it takes from the table," whatever, so, maybe we add that before public comment, put additional items of business, it's a little tricky because then we don't have a twenty-four hour post, but, good questions, thank you, sir. Next item of business, was there some activity I was missing there, somebody was waving?
No.
No, there was a flying object.
Okay.
You bat and flies and-
The next item of business is the consideration of the holiday calendar, we will deal with that via a resolution, if you want to look at it and discuss it first, that's acceptable or not?
I'll move it accepted as presented, and we can discuss it.
I'll second it, been moving and seconded to accept the holiday calendar as presented, again, knowing that that will be dealt with through a resolution. Discussion? So, between Kelly, myself, Kara, and last year's calendar, we, this is what we came up with, I don't think there's anything other than the New Year's Eve day, half a day, we have a meeting that, potentially, we could have a meeting that morning, we haven't decided that yet, but generally, we would meet on the last day of the month to handle the bill paying business, and then close the courthouse at noon for a half a day holiday. Other than that, I think everything's pretty standard. The only thing that caught my eye was, and it's historical, I just didn't really think about that, was the day before the Fourth of July, Fourth of July is on a Saturday, so Friday, July third would become a holiday.
Holiday.
Yeah.
Is there anything that backs up meeting wise to the day before the holiday?
No, I think we're good. I think we're good. Further discussion? I guess my suggestion here would be, because we have this motion on the table, we could go ahead and act on that motion, and act on the resolution after that. Okay, public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on the holidays for 2020, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries, group's pleasure on the resolution pertaining to the holidays.
I mean, so we adopt the resolution twenty dash four, is that right?
No, oh one.
Oh one.
Yes.
It's the first resolution.
I'll second the motion, been moving and seconded to adopt resolution twenty dash zero one, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, Colorado, adopting the 2020 official holidays for the employees of Custer County. I can certainly go through those real quick, probably faster than you can write, but we don't have a problem providing you a copy of that afterwards, so. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of adopting resolution twenty dash zero one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries, I've got a copy of that resolution, and we will get that signed.
Do we always do that?
We have in the past, and then I think it, when it hit a weekend, it got dropped, and so, yeah, because this year, we were the only building on the roof.
Third, I didn't think we wanted to deal with that.
So you don't want to be politically correct and have Indigenous Persons Day?
No, absolutely not, not interested in that.
In fact, I almost said that.
Well, I always-
Decide I'm not, because if you take, if you know the history of Columbus, this was not a nice guy.
Right, somebody would have done it, if it wasn't Columbus, it was going to happen anyway. How about Indigenous Persons Day?
We could do that, I could support that, alright, yes. Next item of business is consideration of the meeting calendar, the B O C C meeting calendar, you gentlemen have a copy of that, I can tell you there's been some changes on that, because as we went through that, things kept coming up, and we kept making some changes, so I would like to go through this quickly, line by line, and probably for the sake of ease, maybe we go through this and then Chair would entertain a motion, so. January eighth, fifteen, and thirty-one, pretty standard, February four, five, and nineteen, pretty standard, February fifth, I contacted the sheriff, he is okay with us conducting the jail tour by statute, we need to do that, and then the nineteenth, the meeting would be in Wetmore, the twenty-eighth, commissioners would meet here, and the twenty-eighth is also a staff meeting, I assign these staff meetings based on the rotating schedule that we have been going on, there'll be four of them this year, so I would conduct that February twenty-eighth. March third, I just put that down there as clarification, that's a presidential primary election Tuesday, so we move those commissioner meetings to five, six, eighteen, and thirty-one, with eighteenth being in Wetmore as well. April seven, eight, fifteen, and thirty, standard meeting dates, fifteenth being in Wetmore. May five and six, commissioner meetings here, May twenty, commissioner meeting at Silver West Airport, May twenty-ninth here, and Commissioner Kanda would chair that staff meeting. Our C C I summer conference is June one through the third, so we move the first, the meetings, B O C C meetings to June four and June five, and then June seventeenth, we would meet at San Isabel Lodge at noon, you will notice, if we go down through this calendar, we dropped one of the San Isabel Lodge meetings.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I thought we said, why not that one?
Well, personally, I think we need to go up there at least once.
Well, I do too, but we're, I guess it doesn't matter traveling wise, we're just pretty busy that month.
And then, June twenty-nine here, and then June thirtieth is that Tuesday, that will continue to be payroll day, payroll day will not be on the twenty-ninth, we would sign those checks, and then they would be distributed on the thirtieth, so I added that list a day on there to avoid any confusion per Donna Hobby's request. July seven, eighteen, normal meetings here, the fifteenth in Wetmore, and then the thirty-first here. August 4 and 5, uh, meetings here with the Board of Equalization meeting scheduled on the 5th. Whether we have one or not, we'll have to check with J.D. August 12 and 28, standard meetings. Commissioner Prince would chair the staff meeting on the 28th.
Wait a second, back up this quick. The Board of Equalization, is that after the commissioner meeting?
Yes, well, it's in the commissioner meeting.
Or is it during?
Yes, during. We would take a recess. Yeah, we would take a recess and call that meeting to order and conduct any business if we have any. If we don't have any, is my understanding, Ms. Kelly, we don't actually have to go into that meeting unless we have some business. And then, I don't know why that's being weird. Give me just a second here. I've got a weird indent there. Okay. So, let's see, and then, uh, August 12, 28, meetings here. September, uh, 1, 2, here. September 16th, back in Wetmore, and the 30th here, pretty standard format in September. October, uh, 6 and 7 for commissioner meetings, 13, 14, 15, and 16 for the budget hearings, Wetmore on the 21st, and back here on the 30th. November 3rd is the general election day, so we move those commissioner meetings to Gen-, uh, November 5 and 6, uh, 18 and 30, all here. And then December, uh, CCI winter conference in Springs, December 1st and 2nd. November 30th, December 1st and 2nd. And then, rather than to, uh, try to have a meeting and get to that CCI conference, we bumped those down to December 8 and 9. And the 16th here, I would chair the staff meeting, uh, after that meeting on the 16th. And then December 31st, a meeting here, and then we close at noon. So we would have our board meeting in the morning and then close at noon for the holidays. So that is a proposed, uh, calendar that we have come up with. Comments on that? Yes, sir?
First thing I want to say is, I promised I wouldn't do this, but I'm gonna do it anyway.
You don't.
Who'd you promise?
I promised myself.
Oh, okay, you can break a promise to yourself.
That I wasn't gonna be Mr. Nice Guy all the time. But I gotta tell you, this is a heck of a lot of work that you, you, you did. I, I really commend you on doing this.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That's a lot of work, and I know it is because I've done it a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And it is a nightmare.
Well, it's a little stressful, too. Thank you for that.
That's true.
Because we end up making decisions, somebody has to make decisions without us all being wrapped into those discussions about those decisions. But I think everything here was pretty carefully scrutinized, and Kelly and I and Kara made probably 40 changes to this calendar in the last two days, so.
That's why I...
Uh, thank you, I appreciate that.
One question.
Yes.
On June 30th, the normal day that we would approve the vouchers?
Yes.
We don't have a specific meeting. It's the, so are we gonna approve vouchers on the 20th?
Yes, that is the idea.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and then they would be distributed on the 30th. And that's why I made that point, is so that people don't assume, because we're having a meeting on the 29th, that they, they will get their paychecks that day.
And then the 30th?
30th is...
Are we having a meeting?
It is an election. That's why we're not having a meeting.
That's election day. That's why we're meeting on the 29th.
That was one of the days that we went, oh, yeah, that's not wrong.
We got a problem here. I went ahead and put the 30th on here as election day so people might look at this and go, huh, wonder why they're not meeting on the 30th? Because of the state and county primary election. Good question there. Anything else, gentlemen, on that?
No, good work.
There's a lot of meetings in Wetmore. I think at some point, maybe we have a discussion about how many meetings is fair and equitable to go down there, but I didn't want to get into that this year, so, uh... And the, and I'll be honest, we just have not had any community involvement from San Isabel, so that's why we trimmed that back.
Right.
We discussed that two minutes.
Yeah.
There was not a soul there.
Shouldn't be new.
Well, you know, it was a neat thing to try to do, but you get right down to it. They're, they're, it's easy to get to Wetmore if they really have an issue.
That's true, too.
They ought to be able to drive another... As a matter of fact, I'd like to see them come there.
10 or 12 miles to go to Wetmore, it's a good point, yeah. Uh, further discussion on this? Well, sorry, that was just discussion, so, uh, in light of that discussion, I would move that we accept the 2020 BOCC meetings.
I'll second that.
Been moving and seconded to accept. Further discussion? Public comment? Question? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? We could pass it on to Tudo.
You could still pass it.
Tudo, but, uh, okay.
I go along kicking and screaming.
Um, so our next item of business is our county appointments. I guess we would start, well, let's start with the county, uh, county appointments instead of the regional appointments, if that's all right. Pull that up.
Is that the one Jackie was squawking about?
Uh, I don't know. I try not to listen to her squawk. Uh, let's do the county position appointments, and then we'll come back to the boards. Is that okay, gentlemen? So we're on a different document, sir, than that. Uh, the government appointments.
That's that one?
Yes, no. Uh, that's that one. Now, I, it's titled Custer County Government Appointments.
Do you want that one, Jay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you need one, Tom?
Oh, this one.
I do not.
Okay. And I just gave you one, I hear.
Oh, there it is.
I, I'm sorry.
What's the date? The date? Yeah, I just changed the year on my...
This was last year, so we just looked at it.
Yeah, so just write 2020.
Yeah, sorry about that.
We've got some changes to make here, no question, so. So all right, we'll go down through that line by line.
It's all good.
So we've done the officer elections, clerk to the board, Kelly Kemper, admin assistant, Kara Evans, county attorney. Sorry, I've already made these changes, so I'll give you guys a chance to do that.
Just give us the answer and then...
Yep. County Attorney Clint Smith.
You sure?
R and B Supervisor Gary Hyde. Uh, Assistant Supervisor Roger Squire slash Vince Cook. Assistant Wetmore Larry Haynes, Donna Hobby, Stephanie Wybarra, Ivan Mars, should be a change on your sheet, I believe, as maintenance.
It's not even on here. So custodian, you're...
Oh, good, yeah, so custodian is Stephanie Wybarra. Scales in maintenance, Ivan Mars. If you want, we could just print this out.
Let me print that out.
Let's do that. I'll send that over for...
Then we can cross it off.
I'll print four copies, five copies. Should've done that, I apologize, gentlemen, that got shuffled somewhere. We can continue, and then you'll get that, uh...
It's okay.
So Human Services Director Laura Lockhart. Um, I did not make these changes. We're gonna deal with that today, those, and rather than leave them blank, I didn't want to delete them so we'd have a point of reference, so that will be changed.
We'll talk about that over here in a minute.
Uh, official posting place, bulletin board, county website, uh, and then the depositories, United Bank, the, sorry, United Business Bank and Colo Trust. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you. You're welcome.
If you could give them to Council, that'd be great.
You want a hard copy?
Uh, fine, thank you.
Can you email that to me? Just, or I'll take that, actually.
Either one. I can email it real quick.
Perfect.
Okay. Uh, so United Business Bank, Colo Trust, uh, P and Z Director Jackie Hobby, Code Enforcement Jackie Hobby, Sanitarian Jackie Hobby, IT Director Vernon Roth, Public Health Alyssa Liedengood, O E M Director Meredith Nichols, V S O John Carroll. That's probably a change on your old sheet, but you can just throw those away if you want.
I did.
Landfill Supervisor Rusty Christiansen. I'm gonna put a slash in there as well because we know we're gonna have a change.
TBD.
Uh, so TBD there, yes. And so that is our standard, uh, government appointments. Group's pleasure?
Sir, I don't think we really can vote on this until we vote on the county publisher.
Uh, that's true, because the way it is right now, we'd be voting on that wording. So we can, let's put it, we can postpone this and do that, or we can put to be determined there.
In the past, you guys have sort of done these, like lumped them so that you could include that. So you'd say, I mean, you already did the chairman, vice chairman, and commissioner. So then you could do, I mean, you lump them together, and so then when you get to the publisher, then at that time, you can, instead of doing this as one big document...
We just didn't want to do it as one document.
Right.
While we had something that had...
Uh, exclude the paper.
We can, or we can postpone a vote on this until we...
Something I didn't think about that maybe you need to add on there is the trash service.
I just thought of that. Just as you started talking, I thought we'd do that. We probably ought, uh, put our trash.
Since you go, bit to head.
Let's put that right under the publisher and secondary publisher. We'll add trash services. Thank you, Kelly, that's a good point. So I've moved to postpone, uh, until after we have, uh, opened bids.
I'll second that.
Moving and seconded to postpone action on the county government appointments until after we open those bids. Discussion? Public comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We will postpone this document. So the next item of business would be the board appointments. Uh, you should have that document. Again, there may have been some changes, uh, and I would suggest we go down through those line items as well.
Is the one in our pack the most up-to-date one?
Uh, no, because I had a couple of updates this morning. Do, let's do the same thing. Let's print some copies of that as well.
Did you already update it?
It is, yes.
This isn't another?
Uh, no, it was accurate yesterday, but it's not today. That's the problem.
Mr. Carroll, one year, whenever, later today, if you would email to me both the ones that you gave me hard copies, because that's where we're at.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just did not get that done. I had one more position to get confirmed this morning, and so it's, it's not accurate. Um, we can start, though, while we're waiting on those copies. Upper Ark Area Council Governments, Commissioner Prince, are you okay with continuing that?
I appreciate it, yes.
By consent, Commissioner Kanda, you all right?
You bet.
As am I. Uh, that would be a one-year appointment, so that would be 121. UCOG Recycling Board, Commissioner Prince, you okay?
I would appreciate it, yes.
By consent, gentlemen? As am I. And then, uh, Workforce Investment Board, uh, myself, Charles Bogle, and Chuck Steigerwal. I don't anticipate any changes there, so I'm gonna put those as 121s as well.
Are they all one-year?
Yes.
Okay, this is legit.
Uh, that should be, other than the year. So, so far, these are all 121s. Yeah. Southern Colorado Economic Development District, SCED. Commissioner Prince, you okay?
I'll be there all day tomorrow.
Uh, by consent, gentlemen? I'm good with that. Mr. Bogle as well. Airport Board, we had two, uh, reappointments there. Bob Jolly, so his term will expire in 1 of 23, and Dan Green, 1 of 23. Those were the only new appointments. Yes.
Why is Commissioner Kanda not on there?
Uh, just point of contact.
Yeah. It's like the others. We have point of contacts everywhere else. I mean, shouldn't he be on that list?
We certainly can, yes.
I would think so.
Okay. So let's add that. Oop, we're gonna need that in bold. Give me just a second here.
Assuming you still want to do that.
Yes, I do.
I knew you did.
Go ahead.
We have that point of contact.
Yeah, we have a point of contact list, actually.
This is just...
This is really the boards, yeah. You know what? I think she's correct in that assessment. We have a whole list of a point of contact. You all right with that, sir? Commissioner Prince?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just find it interesting that...
Yeah, well, these are actually...
Some don't, I thought you would be consistent.
Well, but these aren't point of contacts. These are, we're actually on those boards.
Oh, no, we're not on those boards.
Okay. We're serving on those boards.
Yeah, you're serving on the upper arm.
He does not serve on the airport board.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Uh, 911 Authority Board, uh, myself and Commissioner Kanda, uh, by consent, are we all right to leave that?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Kelly.
So those will be 121s.
So, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
You got Charles Bogle on, uh, Economic Development, Jay. Was, was, is that a new term?
Uh, it's an annual term, yes. It's just a reappointment.
So, nobody, so it's, is there, I'm not arguing whether it's Charles...
No, it's fine.
I just, I was wondering if people volunteered to do that, and were they aware?
Are you talking about the SCED?
Well, yeah, well, I, I just picked that because there, I saw, uh, one where John Johnson was sent, uh, asked to be considered for the planning.
And we'll get to that.
I know you will, but so, so...
There was an ad in the paper.
Was there an ad for all these positions?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I was...
Yep, thank you.
How did we get it? Their names are on there because they all volunteered to be on there. Or if there was more than one, then we would have to reconcile that here in this meeting.
Exactly, yeah. Yep, thank you. C, uh, CES Custer Emergency, Commissioner Kanda, Commissioner Prince.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
These are all just one, what do you...
Yes, if there are not ones, I'll, uh, alert you to that. Action 22, uh, Commissioner Kanda is a seated board member on that. Then, uh, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Prince, Chuck Steigerwal, Charles Bogle. I think that's standard business there. You guys are, by consent, are you okay with that?
You boys want to go to Hollywood, huh?
I, uh, reached out to Jerry Draper. She has agreed to serve on that film commission. She's been on in the past. She was not on it last year. Uh, Marilyn Hennessy was. She no longer is a resident of the county. That's also a one-year appointment. By consent, gentlemen, you okay?
Yes.
Uh, and Jay, I, I've got a slash in there. I'm gonna, uh, put three lines in that, take that slash out of there. You all right with that?
Sure.
Uh, I think it'd be a little more appropriate to have individual lines there. Boy, I'll tell you, words sometimes just about makes me want to... My religion. Uh, Front Range Transportation Region, um, Bill, you've been on that. I've been attending those meetings. Do you want to stay, uh, on that, or...
I've lost track of it.
Okay. I would do that only because I've been going. If you want to make a change there, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll, uh, insert myself. Yeah, no biggie. That's, it's back to one of those things of, uh, divide and conquer.
But let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
Because of that. Is it appropriate to have two commissioners on these boards at the same time?
Uh, we certainly could on, on this front range.
I'm just asking if it's appropriate or not, because, you know, when two are there, we have issues. I'm just asking if it's appropriate or not, because, you know, when two are there, we have issues.
Uh, no, I don't think so. At Central Front Range Transportation Regional Planning Meetings, we discuss that business. We don't discuss county business, right.
But we're representing the county, aren't we?
Absolutely, yeah. So...
Yeah, I guess it's same. So I may come once in a while.
Yeah, and we can leave you on there, too. I don't have a problem with that. I just thought...
I'm glad you're staying.
Since I've been attending those meetings, if you want.
I didn't mean it in that sense. I was just looking at all, we've got several places where we have two of us.
Yeah, right. Seat byways, Mr. Kanda?
Yep.
One year.
Does that Special Transit Advisory Commission, does that go with?
Yes.
And that's a board position, huh?
On seats byways, yes. And I'll put a princes in there and I'll put... Every county has a board seat, right?
All right, I know.
So I'm adding board position to that as well.
Can you, because see how that printed out?
Yes, I changed that.
Oh, you changed?
Yeah, I changed that one here just now, so we've got a full, full-page document there. And you know what, Kelly? You probably have a legitimate question. I'll do a little research on the Special Transit Advisory Commission. Those, I think they're the same.
Well, that's got a slash there, so that's what I wondered if that was, went after the slash or?
It does. I mean, it has.
They just didn't carry a crown.
Yeah, it just printed funny.
Yeah, I just back spaced that, so that slash is in there.
That's right.
Okay, Southern Colorado Rural Emergency Trauma Advisory Committee. So, this gets into some kind of gray area stuff. I guess we appoint those. I reached out to that group. The only person I was not able to get a hold of was Patrick Fiori, but that, those reps do get a search and rescue rep on there, so... I'll have to clean this up a little, to be honest with you. I forgot there's a line break for alternates. So the reps would be Beth Archuleta, Kit Shai, Patrick Fiori, Alyssa Livengood, and Cindy Flower.
So it stands for the Southern Colorado Regional Emergency?
Trauma.
Trauma, that's right.
Advisory Committee, yeah. I'm sorry, let me go back. Beth Archuleta, Kit Shai, Patrick Fiori are seated members, or reps. And then Justine Beach, Susan Carlin, Rob Fogle, Alyssa Livengood, Cindy Flower would be alternates.
So you're going to move those around?
Yeah, I'd better do that right now.
Sticking on their own.
Yeah. Because they really need to go down to the alternate line.
So how does alternates work? Do they go to the meetings or they come in?
Uh, if they are needed. If one of the seated reps cannot go, then they...
There's always a seated rep?
Yes, they are very intense about having county representation there. So that's why we're trying to make sure we get this right. Again, Patrick Fiori is search and rescue rep. Why will it not allow me to do that? Okay, so we have three seated. If you don't mind, let me just check that email real quick to make sure we don't make a mistake here. Uh, so, oh, you know what? I'm glad I looked, so... Oh, that's right. So Beth, Justine, and Kit, is that what your records show? And then Susan, Rob.
You had Patrick Fiori.
Patrick would be seated also, yes. And then the alternates would be Susan, Rob.
Lisa, Justin.
Alyssa.
Alyssa, I mean.
And Cindy. Cindy. Is that what you have? Let me go back to my...
So Patrick is a, he's on the...
He's a member, yes.
He's on the board.
Okay, so we just need to move him.
I did, yeah. I've got Elizabeth, Patrick, and Kit as reps.
What about Justine?
You had Justine in there, what are you saying?
Uh, she is an alternate, I believe. Let me double-check that. Justine Beach is seated. My apologies, sir.
So Patrick's the only one that needs to move up.
Give me just a second here. On my document, I need to move Justine up.
Oh, just black.
But I'm doing that as we speak. Oh, gosh darn it. So Elizabeth, Patrick, Kit, and Justine are seated. Does that, your records reflect that? And then Susan. Rob Fogle, Alyssa Livengood, Cindy Flower. Okay there, gentlemen?
Yep.
Okay, so the Director of Ambulance License Your Inspection, that is Southern Colorado RETAC. That group does that. Planning Commission, would you like to speak, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Thank you.
I want to compliment Ms. Jackie, too.
Why?
She did, she did all the lion's work on these next three appointments, made sure those letters were in hand, and so I really appreciated that. Thank you. She's got letters for us to sign if we vote to approve these as well. Don't ever forget to do that.
Uh, wanted to add with sen out, because I'm lacking board members. So I would have two board members of the Planning Commission that need reappointed, and that's Mike Shields and Patrick Lynch. So I would like their approval to be appointed for a three-year term on the Planning Commission, please.
Okay, and those were not new appointments. Those needed to be re-upped.
Correct.
Okay.
So Shields and Lynch.
They're on there.
To 1, I see them.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the BZA, Mr. Patterson was the chairman, and he moved away. And so he came in and he resigned his position. The way that the board works is that the associate members get the first chance of taking the seated position. So Darrell Winland was a...
Rob had, or how does that happen?
We asked. We asked with seniority. So Darrell Winland will take Kenny Patterson's place if he's approved for the remainder of Kenny's term.
Do you know when that expires? No, we do not have him on here.
No, because I took Kenny off, so Darrell Winland's term would expire in 2022.
One L or two?
Two Ls, two Rs.
What? Windler?
Oh, Winland.
Darrell.
Darrell's two Rs and two Ls. I'll get you...
Spelling wrong, the last name spelled.
Windland again.
W-I-N-D-L-A-N-D. And I will get you a...
122?
Yes. All these terms expire in January.
Right, but the year, the unexpired Patterson term was 122.
Correct.
So he goes to 122.
Correct. Okay, so if you would approve him as an associate member moving to a seated position on the BZA, please.
Okay, all right.
And then the other two that were up, they're already BZA members, was Lockett Pittman and Brad Hartbauer. They both sent their letters of intent in for three more years, and I would like them approved, please.
So it was 123 would be the end of their term?
Yes.
Okay. Associates?
Associate, oh.
Jean, can't vary.
No, not up.
Not up.
Hartbauer and Pittman.
Okay, so then associates are appointed for one year, and they have to do a letter of intent every year. So that would be Skip Northcross, John G. Johnston, and Mary Maury.
Okay.
So...
One year, so 121.
Uh-huh, so I would like you to appoint all three of those also, please.
All right, very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, and I want to mention that Kenny, we made a certificate for Kenny for serving on the board of zoning adjustment for many years, and he will be missed. And I'm not just saying that because his son's in the audience.
Do we need to sign that, or did you already take care of that?
Already took care of that, and if you'll sign those letters, and then I will make envelopes and make myself some copies. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Job well done.
So we don't have to move to through this?
No, we'll do it as the entire document.
You are done. Do the third document.
What's going to, yes? You okay with that?
You are the chair.
Well, okay.
It's not how it's been done, but you do it how you want it.
County Tourism Board, three-year terms. We had a vacancy there. We did not have any new appointments. Charlie Ellison chose to go off of that tourism board. They have not had a replacement there.
Peggy Collins, still on it?
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
As soon as Artur is on there?
Oh, yeah, that's a delete.
That's a delete.
Yes.
Thank you. Scared me.
That was an oversight on my part.
I thought you got a letter. I didn't know about that.
No. Good point, yeah.
I spoke and talked about filling that board. I told them when they're ready, the empty position, Ms. Ellison, told them they needed to come to us and we were going to approve it. Or not approve it. It would be our final decision, but they need to come in and recommendation to us.
Yeah, so I've only get, oh, yeah. Sorry. Let's see the problem here. There are other members on the next page, Bob Swanson. So we do, other than just to recognize that Charlie Ellison has chosen to go off of that board, no new appointments there.
So you've got Peggy, Debbie, Jenny, Bob?
Yes, yep.
That's it, right there.
Yep. West Custer Library Board, we've already done that at our last meeting. Renee Tobin, I've got that as 1220. That's not right.
Mine, it says 1222.
Okay.
Rebenowitz.
Rebenowitz.
Yes, you got 2020.
But that's December, see? They, theirs turned down their end in December, and the rest of ours end in January.
Yeah.
So 1222 for Renee Tobin.
You've had that guy on here twice.
Oh, I do, too.
Yeah.
So that's why I didn't delete that. Yeah, we'll delete that last Renee Tobin. Thank you for catching that. So Library Board, Dave Heppi, Debbie Rebenowitz, Nicole Parsons, Renee Tobin, Jim Gerhart, JD English. Extension Advisory, Brianna Livengood goes to 123, Mary Gump 123, Kelly Camper to 123, Jordan Hedberg to 123. Good morning, sir.
I think I resigned from that board.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I probably did it this last year, so she either filled it or it's vacant.
Okay, all right, so you...
I have no interest in it.
Okay, all right.
So how many are there supposed to be?
It's up to a certain number.
Yeah, I sent her a library pressing.
Okay, I'll follow up with that.
I think it was in February or so last year.
Because the few meetings I've been to, she's wondered where you...
Yeah, she thought you were still on that board, but...
No, I had sent in a letter of resignation to her, so I think she didn't get it.
I'll follow up with her, make sure.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll resend that to her. I'll go find it.
May I look at your...
Missing?
I just deleted the wrong one. So Janet Hedberg, I deleted her by mistake.
Janet Freeburg.
Janet Freeburg. Unless you've got another wife or something.
She was a neighbor. She was a neighbor.
That's correct, yes.
Something you're not saying.
I said Hedberg, and I'm typing Freeburg. And she's their 4H rep. Those all expire in 123. Kyle Evans, Guinevere, and Nelson serve as ex-official members, undetermined terms there. So Brianna, Mary, Kelly, Janet, Kyle, and Guinevere. Is that what you all have? Okay, Fair Board, Audrey Gluski, 23, Wendy Rusk, 23, as a cell committee member. Diane Rose, 123, Trent Stafford, 123, Marilissa Gonzalez, 123. Cheryl Laramore, 123, Brianna Evert, 123, Lynetta Gilmore, 121, Irene Salee is their new member, 123. Kyle Evans, Guinevere, Nelson serve as ex-official. Sue Robertson, Lance Ingram, Pepper Stafford are on the cell committee. Sue's been on it for two years. Her term expires in 123. Lance Ingram, 123, I'm sorry, Sue Robertson's 121. Lance Ingram, 123, Pepper Stafford, 123. Questions about that group? Okay, Weed Advisory Board, I did not get a response from Artur Garrison, who is the Colorado Department of Transportation rep on that board. He has not attended the meeting in 2019. He did attend the meeting in 2018. I left his name on there. I'll reach out to him and see. If he wants to continue, then we'll just have to vote on that as an addition later on.
So was it a requirement to have a seat out?
No, that was a desire to have that seat rep on there. So Clint Smith indicated that he would like to continue to serve on that board, so his term goes to... Actually, I had 123. Those are one-year terms.
I was going to ask you that.
Yeah. Double-check that real quick. I looked it up once, but I looked up about six of them yesterday, so... See what the bylaws. I was thinking it was one, Clint.
I didn't even get the bylaws. I just took your word for it. At my age, I just take it year by year anyway. That's all right, Clint, that's all we do.
Yeah, one-year terms, so that was a typo on my part. So those 23s should go back to 21s. Bill Donley, 21. Dick Downey, 121. Jeff Outhier, 121. Roger Gregg, 121. Sharon Berry is a 21. Roger Squire indicated to me, even though he's not going to be a county employee, he would like to continue to serve on that. So he's a 21, and then Linda Poole. Well, yeah, I hesitated a little bit, but my understanding was she was leaving, but I was informed yesterday that she's back. She's not, so she's back in the county, so I'm going to leave her on there.
Got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So Roger's got a Roden Bridge. Does it require them to have a Roden Bridge guy on there?
No.
Just because they have the road?
He was Roden Bridge, so, yeah, we can take that R and B out of there. Thank you. Good point. So, yeah, Roger Squire, 121.
Roger could do it, too, if we needed another Roden Bridge guy on there.
Pardon?
I mean, if we needed a Roden Bridge guy.
Oh, yeah, we can put another one on. Yes, exactly. Yeah, it's just history. Roger was very involved in that from Roden Bridge, so... I might just put a note to myself in there and then have a conversation with that group.
Not a bad idea.
You know who's really good with weeds down there?
No.
Kurt Wilson. Weeds and...
Okay, that's true.
Knowledgeable.
So we'll, I'll put Roden Bridge rep in there, and then I'll leave that.
Not a bad idea, because they get to see the roads more often than everybody else does. See their weeds coming.
I know that Weed Board pretty good. I'm sure they would like to have that representation on there. So that is what I have, gentlemen, if we need to read careful. Sorry, no, I've got most of a blank page in it. Wetmore Community Center Board, I spoke with those folks. No changes there. That's correct. All those dates would go to 121s.
That's really true. The rest is a page.
Yeah.
It's all 121s.
And I apologize. I should have made that change yesterday. Started to see red by 4:30 yesterday, so...
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
And I'm not trying to create an issue, but is it really appropriate for two, a husband and wife, to serve on the same committee, or does that skew the voting?
I don't have a problem with it, but...
It's just a question. I'm not trying to create an issue.
I've had it occur on other boards of mine and other boards that I've served on as well. But, yeah. Good question. Let's see, do we have that?
You got Spar on there.
Ruth and Charles Paul and Courtney.
Yeah, that's, sorry, I was down to the Library Board already, but...
There's a wonderful people doing their job. I just question whether there would be more...
Well, majority rules on one... Well, majority rules on one vote makes a difference. It might be an issue. Did they all submit letters again?
Pardon me?
Did they all submit letters?
Uh, they submitted letters to Nan, is my understanding, and she just sent me anything.
Here's what they wanted.
Yeah. Attainable housing, I did not get clear indication from all those folks, so Tony Delang is no longer on that, so that is a delete.
It's Tony who...
Tony Delang.
Oh, there he is. Monty want to do it?
As far as I know, yes. And then Autumn Dever is representing UCOG on that.
Why is there 11/29/18 per inch on that?
Oh, up on the top. That's probably when that was started. It actually is. That was their start date of that board. Terry Munson's no longer on that board either. That was an oversight. He had personal conflicts there. Enterprise Zone rep, Charles Bobo, goes to a 21. Did not get clear indication from Wendy Rusk. I will follow up on that.
What is the enterprise zone rep?
It's a loan, Upper Ark Council of Government's loan program.
It's not part of the Upper Ark stuff that's already over there?
No, it's different, yeah. And then I spoke with Keith Hood on the Upper Arkansas Basin Roundtable rep. He desired to continue serving on that. I've gone to a couple of those meetings. He does a good job representing us there.
So, I move that we approve the appointments as presented and modified in our discussion.
Okay. I'll second that motion. We can always come back to this. If we follow up with a couple of these people and there's a change, then we'll just put that on a agenda item and deal with it.
We've already approved the Library Board, didn't it?
Yeah.
It's just a double approver?
Yeah, just so we have documentation of it here. If we don't have it here, we don't have a record of that. He keeps that record, so...
I'll get a new one. I'll fix it up.
Further discussion? Yeah. I'm going to send you this one as well, so...
I've got a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Are you voting now on...
On this whole slate of board appointments?
Including county attorney?
No.
You haven't done that?
That's on another document. We postponed it.
I have a comment.
Okay, all right. Further discussion on the board appointments for 2020.
So, it's only the board appointments?
That's correct. Just this one three-page doc, four-page document. Public comment. Hearing no proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the board appointments for 2020 as presented and revised, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Carrie, give me just a second, and I will send those to you right now, so we don't lose track of that.
Feel about five minutes.
Uh, that would be appropriate for me, since I'm trying to do some emails. By consent, we'll be in recess for five minutes. Deconvene, time is 10:40 a.m. So, we will move on to newspaper of record. We have postponed the regional appointments until after the opening of the bids. So, with that, council, I would ask that you... Oh, we've already done, we've already opened those bids. That's correct. Sorry. We just need to act on that, correct? Would you like to re...
Refresh our...
Refresh our...
I don't have the bids.
Oh, okay. All right, that's fine.
Well, I mean, I remember the numbers, the basic numbers.
I was going to say, I can go back to, we can go back to the minutes, but... Go ahead, if you would, sir.
Do you want me to go get those bids?
Well, I know the basic numbers. I think it was the same they were. I mean, the Sentinel bid 13 cents a line.
They're in those 18 minutes.
Okay. Give me just a second, sir, and I'll clean that up.
I think that was the 18.
13 cents per line, if I didn't say that.
18th or 31st.
31st.
I got it right here.
The ones Jay was on top of and wanted to approve.
Mm-hmm.
I was trying to go too fast.
Okay, yeah, enough there.
I've done this paper bids.
They're pulling towards whatever I picked, 30.
You've got a conflict.
No, cut.
I don't care.
Do you like me to read that?
Yes, if you would. Commissioner Prince will read those.
What I'm reading is the unapproved minutes, but...
Correct.
Says legal publication bids. Two bids were received for legal publications for 2020. County Attorney Clint Smith opened and read both bids. Sagrada Crista Sentinel's bid was 13 cents per line for the first assertion and 12 cents per line for subsequent assertions for statutory publications and 30 cents per line for non-statutory publications. The Wetmount Tribune's bid was 9 cents per line for statutory publications and 25 cents per line for non-statutory publications. That will be rewarded to, be awarded during the January 8th BOCC meeting last Tuesday.
And you're in, what, the minutes?
This is the December 31st minutes. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Yes, December 31st.
No wonder I clicked on the wrong set of minutes. That's why I couldn't come up with it. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Group's pleasure.
I move that we accept the Tribune's bid for the... What is it called? The job for the public publication?
Legal publication, yeah.
That also...
It's been moved second to accept the bid from Wetmount Tribune Newspaper for the publication of record for the county discussion. Public comment? Go ahead, sir.
I just had to... I appreciate both of you, both papers, because even if they're not the publication of record, both of them do put our information in, and I appreciate that.
Good.
Yeah, I want to say one other thing, too.
Go ahead.
I noticed that the Sentinel has it in the past, and they didn't have it. Still published a lot of things on their own nickel, and I appreciate that.
That's what I should say.
Yeah. It was all of it. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Recognize. Pass that along to George.
Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of accepting Wetmount Tribune's bids for publication of records, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Carrie's?
Thanks, gentlemen. A real quick moment, if I may?
Go ahead.
Since that's passed. There was a law change in April. And Clint, we'll have to double-check this with state statutes, but you're no longer required to publish agendas. It's no longer a statutory requirement. I think that starts maybe in January. I can't remember. The law got passed in the last legislature.
Talking about BOCC agendas.
Any towns, whatever. So, Westco's going to stop sending theirs. They're going to post it online. I think there are some requirements on that, but it's one of those things that it's been tradition for so long, you could have missed it if you weren't paying attention.
So, there's not a 24-hour requirement?
I don't, the requirements are all the same.
You've got to get it from somewhere else.
You don't have to publish it. You have to post it. All that's the same, but you don't have to print it in a newspaper. It's the change. Clint can look up the change. I can't remember where it was found. But that's an update on that. So, it's up to you guys if you want to still send it, but it's not a requirement anymore.
Yeah, I sat in on a legislative hearing at CCI about that very thing, and CCI supported not publishing any of it, any of the county records. That did not fly. The legislature said, you know what? We'll let the agendas go.
Every year, and actually Hickenlooper vetoed it two years ago, made it to his desk to eliminate all publishing requirements in newspapers. He vetoed it, and he said, let's look at this when we have 90% broadband on the thing. So, probably what is going to happen over time...
It's true. That is an issue.
It is, and again, you know, there's the Colorado Press Association, which we're a member of. We actually run the entire legal publication for the entire state, so we send everything into the Colorado Press. They upload it. I can't remember the name of the website, but you can go by county, township.
I also think it's discriminatory against people that don't have the money to buy a computer or a broadband.
You could argue the same thing about a newspaper, though.
Sure.
Well, for 50 cents, it's a lot cheaper.
Well, I think we're a dollar.
Oh, it's a dollar now. Where are we?
But the point is, is I, every year, this gets... It's already been on the floor, so at some point, this is probably... I don't think the fights, you know, the Colorado Press Association fights really hard on it, of course, but I think at some point, we're going to, where there won't be requirements for printing anymore on that. So, that's probably coming down the road. I mean, every year, it gets discussed. Last year was kind of weird. It didn't even make it out of committee, except that one part.
Yeah, just the one part, so...
Two years ago, it made it to Hickenlooper's desk. He vetoed it, but he said, I'm fine with it as long as we have 90% broadband coverage.
Yeah, lobbied pretty hard. The Colorado Press lobbied against that for obvious reasons.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's just an update, and I think at some point, it's a good move.
Okay, appreciate it.
So, thanks, guys.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Next item of business is the consideration of the trash service. We have two bids. I'm going to ask council to open and read those.
What's our service now?
P-Bro has all of it, I think.
I already opened them.
Thanks. I was just curious. I think so. And I do have two bids here. I opened them just prior to the start of the meeting. I haven't opened the invoices. I haven't looked at either documents. First one I have is from P-Bro, the bid for 2020. This bid is dated January 1, 2020. P-Bro disposal of bids to Custer County the following. Two-yard dumpster serviced one time per week, $67 per month for the courthouse. Two-yard dumpster serviced one time a week, $67 per month for Roden Bridge. An extra dump for either two-yard, $16.75 per dump. Three-yard dumpster serviced one time per week, $104 per month for the sheriff's office. A three-yard dumpster serviced two times per week, $171 per month for the sheriff's office. An extra dump at the sheriff's office, $26 per dump. Thank you for the opportunity to bid. And then it says this bid excludes Wetmore. So, separate bids for the courthouse, for Roden Bridge, and for the sheriff.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Who does Wetmore? Do we know?
Pardon?
Who does Wetmore?
I have no idea.
It's a great question.
Probably out of the law, I would guess.
I never even heard of it.
Okay, I'll follow up on that, because that is a good question.
Okay, and then the other bid I have is from Oak Disposal. This bid is dated January 6, 2020. Here is the bid for 2020 trash service. I will guarantee this price for two years. There is also a 20% discount for paying one year at a time. Two-yard dumpster emptied one time per week, $40 per month. If you have any questions, please let me know. Signed Valerie Van Dusen, Director of Operations, Oak Disposal Services. It's just the one number there.
All right, thanks, sir.
And it doesn't break it down as the courthouse sheriff for Roden Bridge.
That's right, no. All right, what's group's pleasure?
I move that we appoint Oak Disposal as the county's official refuse collector with a lower bid than its competition.
Okay, is there a second? It's been moved seconded to accept Oak Disposal's bid discussion.
I would be curious to know on a special pickup that is not already...
Like an extra?
Extra, you know? If it's going to be significantly higher than, you know... I don't know how often we would do that. I mean, you know, I would like to get a feel for what is the annual cost of either of them, and that way we can make a better comparison.
That's hard to tell.
I know that.
Yeah, and for that reason, I'm not going to support your motion. I just don't think it was a... We have an apple-to-apple comparison. I thought the same thing, but...
I did, too. Do you want to... How do you want to do that?
Well, we're going to vote on it here after we get done in discussion and have public comment. You did.
How did I do that? That phone got me. I tracked.
That's why we asked.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Further discussion? Yeah, that was my thought.
That's right. I did. I remember.
I think I would like to withdraw my motion.
Second withdrawn?
Oh, withdraw it.
Motion is withdrawn.
My suggestion would be, let us tell them what we want to bid. We'll write it out with a blank and let... So, both of them have exactly the same, what they're bidding on. And maybe the P-Bro to us is fine, but I think we need to have apples and apples. I agree with you. This is... I don't know what we're doing here.
Well, it's just sort of a discussion after the fact.
This is a discussion now.
The thought would be, if you multiplied it out, how does it stack up? Because I can't imagine P-Bro putting in one... Who put the one bid in? It was for just a blanket one cost.
It was oak.
Didn't consider it now.
It was oak.
That was oak, so they had to have considered all the dumpsters, I would think, in their bid. And if they didn't, then that's...
Oak was $17 less. But is that for a two-yard dumpster or a three-yard dumpster?
That's what I mean.
And...
It was two yards. Two yards.
Okay, and if they needed a special pickup...
Right, how do they handle it? What's the cost going to be for everything else?
And then how many special pickups do we have? I mean, if it's, you know, twice a year, it's probably not significant. If it's every month, it probably could be. So, we don't know the answer.
I'm going to move we accept P-Bro's bid. Please present. Is there a second?
I'm going to second it so I can understand your logic.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved seconded to accept P-Bro's bid as presented. Discussion? A couple of things, I guess. Obviously, P-Bro's bid was more explanatory.
Detailed.
That's primary reason. We do have, and we posted that we have the right to refuse any or all bids. We don't have to accept one. The other problem that I have here, Commissioner Prince, is that... I'm going to take exception to your suggestion that we reach back out, because now we have opened this can of worms that bid has been published. P-Bro's bid has been published. So, I think it would be reasonable, fair, or equitable to reach back out to Oak Disposal and say, what do you mean?
Well, I think they did the same thing last year, because I remember that there was one bid that did not have the three-yard.
That's right.
The sheriff's office in there. Did you have that in your bid last year, or did you?
I did.
Yeah, so I think Oak left that out last year, too.
Then my concern would be, we have, if we vote with your motion,
Then my concern would be, we have, if, if we vote with your motion, we're breaking a tradition that we've had where we went with the lowest bid.
Correct.
So I think we need to do that. If that's what the pleasure is, then we need to do that.
Yeah.
Open-minded.
I still have a question. How do we know it's the lowest bid?
We don't.
We don't. See, that's the problem. If we, if we, if we multiply it out, and then we assume, we're going to have to get the bidder to quan, or qualify at what he bid, they bid, on the one price does all, because it would have to include everything that the other company bid on. That's, that's our requirement. Didn't we post that? I mean, they, how did they bid against? What did we?
We asked for bids for trash service.
Right. And they did their homework.
Oak's not aware, apparently, that we have a three-yard dumpster, or he would have bid it.
Well, I would, I guess, I don't know.
Neither. I just.
Say to get it to clarify the bid, I don't know if that's legit or not, is it?
Well, I think Chairman Flower is correct when he says, "We're not going to reopen the bid."
Can't reopen, cannot go back.
That was not appropriate for me to say.
Because they know what each, they're, I, I just want to make sure they know what they're covering for that one price. If it was everything, period, all, all sizes, then we got to decide whether they, do they have the equipment to handle it, and why didn't they bid?
Well, it's, yeah.
So. Let's kind of a backwards question. If, a month, two, three, four, five down the road, we decide that we're not satisfied, we can terminate one and hide the other, correct? So I think that would be worthwhile, then, to go ahead and do the lower bid, which is what the county has traditionally done. And if we find that the extra pickups are way too high, or if the sheriff needs a three-yard dumpster, and the number goes from forty to one hundred and fifty, or whatever the number is, we can look back and say, "You know what? This is not what we want. We're going to go back and, we can go back to P-Borrow O and say, "Will you honor the bid that you..."
All right, so now, that's not a bad idea. The other piece to consider is, are they qualified? And does the bid, is there enough information for us to make a decision that says, "They're qualified, therefore we'll risk the low bid"? I think Tom was worried in, in that boat where it probably, they probably aren't.
I don't know, I think they both are qualified.
If that's the case, then the low bid gets it.
Okay, further discussion? Public comment?
You've done, I don't know how many extra pickups were called for.
Uh, I don't know how that billing would go, whether we just get a statement from them, or they line item out, the extra pickups, I don't know that.
Can I make a comment?
You may. This needs to go to Jackie.
So the Oak Disposal bid doesn't even have a three-yard.
No.
That's right.
How do you know how much?
That's why I was making the point.
Charge you for a three-yard.
Yeah, I, I view that kind of as an incomplete bid based on our needs.
Implicates to me they're not qualified. Because they screwed up the bid, and therefore you have one bid that's legit.
Excellent point, because they could have done their due diligence and said, "Well, what are your requirements? How often do you need a pickup? What size do you need?", and then bid accordingly. So I, I think your point's very well taken, that they have presented an incomplete bid.
Well, I'll tell you, their bid for two yards is quite a bit lower, and so makes you one here and that one. So.
You know, it's a tough one, because.
That's why I think they ought to, do they know what they bid on?
Okay, further public comment?
What's the, what's the, what's the motion?
The motion is to accept P-Borrow O's, uh, bid as presented. Further discussion?
Okay.
Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay. That's what carries. Uh, P-Borrow O will be awarded the trash services bid. Next item of business is going back now to the postponed.
Let's make it clear, maybe I should have done it during the motion, but that, I think we had an incomplete bid, and so therefore we had the choice. And that's, that's the way it is. I'm not saying.
If you'd like me to put on the record why I voted yes, even though I motioned the other way originally, is because you are correct, both of you. It was an incomplete bid. They didn't do their due diligence.
Right, so we acted on what we had.
And I feel that you should not get a bid. We'd be throwing darts at a blank dartboard, because we don't know what the other fees would be. So, thank you, let me put that on the record.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Uh, so we'll go back to the postponed item of business of regional appointments. Uh, if you can pull that down, if you can.
Move that we.
Challenge, sorry, go ahead, sir.
I was just going to say, I, I move that we approve the Custer County government appointments for, um, 2020, as presented with the inclusion of trash services awarded to P-Borrow O.
I'll second it. Been moved and.
I'll second it. Is that, did you already move it?
I, I seconded it. Um, we'll get to discussion. I may ask you to withdraw that motion. It's been moved to second it to approve the county government appointments with the inclusion of the trash company. Uh, discussion. I also think we need to include the legal publication.
Yeah.
Did you say that?
I didn't, I didn't feel any need to say that.
Okay.
I said, "As presented."
Okay.
With the addition, but the only one that wasn't.
That's true.
But the public record didn't know it was already on there.
Yeah, that's true.
So let's go ahead and say it.
Then I'll modify my motion to say, including awarding the bid for publications to Wetmore Tribune, and awarding the trash service to P-Borrow.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. I, you're right, it is in there, there's no question about that.
So you, second is.
I did, yes.
Okay.
Discussion?
Is this?
Yes, it is, sir. This is where you come into play.
All right, because, well.
Did we misspell your name?
No, no, I just want to say that I was, I've been a licensed attorney since 1971, so I'm entering into my forty-ninth year now as a licensed attorney. In fact, they didn't even do the formal attorney registration. They didn't start that until 1975, so I was, and they assigned numbers. Now, I mean, they're up to over fifty thousand, I guess I haven't checked the numbers recently, but I have number 2508. Nobody's ever asked to see in all those forty-nine years. I want you to.
You are certifiable.
I am a licensed attorney since 1971.
Wow.
Um, so I just bought, I fished that out.
Yeah.
And my number's, and that was just depending, because they said, "Okay, all attorneys have to register now." And I worked for the district attorney at that time, so the DA sent in all of our names together. If you'd done it promptly, I know a lot of attorneys that had two-digit numbers.
Fifty-six.
Yeah, I got 2508. And the original number one was the, who was the, ever the chief justice of the Colorado Supreme Court was at the time. They got the first numbers, and then the court appeals, and then it went to the peons. Um, so I just wanted to say, I am a licensed attorney.
So we possibly could be voting to approve a licensed attorney, is that?
Yeah, I mean, just, you've kind of taken this on faith. Nobody's ever asked to see.
And you said 1971?
Seventy-one.
You can choose not to participate, but it'd be interesting for us to divulge what we were doing in 1971.
Finishing up elementary school.
I was a junior in high school in Alliance, Nebraska.
Okay.
I was a junior in college.
Seventy-one, I was a sophomore.
Oh.
Sophomore in college.
I was six years old.
Uh, nineteen seventy-one?
Or was it seventy? Seventy-one, yeah.
I believe you and I are pretty close in age. I was a junior in high school.
Yeah.
How old are you?
I, I was a, in college. Sophomore in college.
Wow.
So it's still pretty close.
So five or six years older than I am?
Hard to believe, huh?
Were you already?
Fifty.
Well, all right, sir, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, further discussion? Um, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on the county government appointments as presented and revised. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. I apologize, I forgot to ask for public comment. If you have any, we'd sort of listen to them.
I was a sophomore in high school.
You're just a spring chick.
Okay, um, so that being said, gentlemen, I've got an email waiting to send to you. Uh, I will include this document on that, so if you give me just a second.
You sent an email for what?
I have not. I'm getting ready to send this email with these updated documents.
Thank you.
Kelly, I include you, Clinton.
Did you do the point of contact?
No, sorry, I'll hold back.
I have a list of that.
Um, great point, let me. Gosh darn it. Uh, so I've got the point of contact, I will send that as well. Uh, I can read through those. Do you gentlemen have them?
They did have.
So Commissioner Prince, useful public service, attainable housing, planning and zoning, human services, public health, uh, West Custer County Board, and Wetmore, West Custer, sorry. Wetmore Community Center Board, and Wetmore Library Board, human services, and human resource, and tourism. Commissioner Canada, Emergency Management Office, Road and Bridge, landfill recycling, veteran service, and airport. Commissioner Flower, Integrated Technology, Custodial, Grounds and Maintenance, Building, Resource Center Annex Extension, Upper Ark. And then we were all three point of contacts for the Justice Center. Comments, questions, changes?
The other comment I have is, landfill recycling is the recycling part that the landfill does?
Correct, not.
Not, not your.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to clarify.
The plant out there.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I have no issues, I think they're all set.
Um, it's, we're not talking about high-country recycle.
Correct.
Yeah. Any changes, gentlemen, you desire?
No, sir.
What's the, you got all the other things we've talked about, like weed board and stuff, that's all separate?
Uh, yeah, you know, that's a good point.
We got the other things, like the roads and byways and all that stuff, but how do you?
I wonder weeds should be on here.
I think, I think they all ought to be on there, is that, where, where is the guy that's focused on weeds, or the fair board?
No.
Saying all that would be useful as a measure. So people that have a question, go to the right guy first. Because it's just a public record to cover it.
Good point, I'm thinking about that, um.
We can discuss that later, but I think.
I think we could cover the weed board and, and extension, and, well, not necessarily extension, weed board and the fair board with agricultural.
Sure, they could do that. But see, if you're, put yourself in a stranger's boots, comes to Custer County and he wants to find out who's got the scenic byways, because he sees trails, or trails and whatever that's going on, who's, who can he go to and click on somebody to find out who, who could point him in the right direction?
This is on the website, because I've seen it before.
This is?
Yeah.
And so.
They can walk in and say, "Mr. Kara, who do I talk to with this issue?"
Have a separate list, yeah. On the other kinds of things.
Yeah, I guess.
Depends on how we put it on the website.
Tourism isn't any different than the fair board. I mean, they're an organization that operates under our umbrella.
That's right.
Okay.
Uh, weed board, same thing. Maybe we add both of those. I never thought about it.
Yeah, see, the airport's on there, isn't it? So I, I would think you would have anything that we are point of contact for.
Yeah, I'm sure this is a list that's been passed year to year. I don't know, I looked at Ms. Kelly, but, um, I don't have a problem, being the point of contact for the weed board and the fair board, but if you gentlemen feel otherwise, speak up.
Fair, that's what you're doing. And then if there's somebody got an issue, then you're the guy that's going to.
Right.
Not solve it, but help get them to us to make a decision.
You will have the open ear to whatever the issue is.
Yeah.
And you got, you've been involved, and it's easier to understand and catch it, you or me, off guard, saying, "What are you going to do?" All we'd say is, "Go see Tom."
So then that also.
What we could do is have Kara just go back through what we just did, come back and put things on there where they might make sense, and let us talk about it.
That's what we've, we've done in the past, when we had the, the squares with all the different boards, on the left-hand side, not the appointments, the point of contact for each one. We had that right there in the past.
Uh, so I'm looking back up to Commissioner Prince's, uh, West Custer County Board, that really should say Library Board.
Absolutely.
Um, somebody not knowing that would go.
What's that?
What board? I don't know what board that is. Um, can you think of any others, Kelly, that we're missing? I mean, kids council, it could just go on and on and on, but we don't really, well, yeah, we're the financial fiscal agents for kids council.
I, I go to, kids council, the problem is, it's the, it's the same day as Upper Ark, it's all the meetings. I try my best to get to kids council, because I always felt that was part of my purview. Doesn't need to be, but I like to support them.
Uh, I don't have a problem putting that on there as well, but, because if somebody called, other than signing the invoices, which I do, what about kids council? Uh, Commissioner Prince is pretty much.
I think it makes sense. I think anything that we are, either we get grants for them, or we are responsible for their payroll, or anything, I think we probably go to list of, a point of contact, just so the public knows who to go to.
All right, let me see what that, um, you guys don't think this is hokey, but what their actual name is, let me just a second, and I'll look that up. I think it is, but they, and maybe that's the state that I'm thinking about, um.
Well.
Yeah, Custer County Kids Council, so let's add that, if that's all right by consent, gentlemen. Because I think Commissioner Canada is right, it just adds a lot of clarity.
I agree.
Uh, do we want to put the attorney in charge of anything?
He's qualified.
Well, he is, because he's got a card, he's a card.
Y'all don't even have a card.
Yeah.
Or a member.
He's a membership card.
He's a member of the Colorado Bar Association.
I don't belong to the Colorado Bar Association.
Um, Bill, anything in your, you want to add the scenic byways?
Yeah. And there's Action 22, you know?
Yeah, we all three are on that.
Yeah, but I'm the board dude.
Oh, yeah.
And I've been on the bill commission longer than you, Mr.
That's on that one list, though.
So if there's an opening, I want to join.
Okay.
I've seen it by this.
I want the role.
Oh, you want the role? Do you want to do any of the work?
I want to be against Catherine Hepper, whoever the latest.
Do you want to do any of the work and go to any of the meetings?
So maybe we should make a, well.
Then I'm not going to put you on there.
It'll be double.
Because somebody in Ashville, too, does the, they go to the website.
Yeah, I don't think we want to recreate that whole list, but these are things that people.
She brings up a good point, like, you know, even though there's some extra county things, like Upper Ark's a good example, that's out of the county, but it includes the county business, Action 22 is similar, and if there's somebody out there in Action 22 land that wants to know, um, who's on that board, and what is Custer County, it's nice to know who, who's representing that, as a focus for the, for us.
But a lot of.
Like the other things.
A lot of us within the county use this county contact list to say.
Right, sure.
There's a mail go to.
That's okay, yeah, like the Road and Bridge.
So maybe you need to have, if you want to do some separate list.
You could have a separate column under it that says other, other... You could do it that way to keep it simple. And the same, it's just the way it's presented on the website. And even you guys, you know. Action 22 may call the clerk's office, so say, "Who's the action 22?"
Get that all on one page.
And then I send it to Kara.
Yeah. And then Kara needs to know who listens.
Well, I would move we accept the BLCC point of contact as presented and revised. Second it to accept the point of contact list.
And then let's...
Discussion?
Discussion might include getting it updated on the website and then working to get the right things in as the other columns.
Okay.
Right. I believe we have normally all of the contacts for the committees are on the website. I think that's the way appropriate.
Yeah. I'll kind of look at this maybe as a living document as well to say, "Hey, let's..."
Right. It's not the only...
Yeah. Doesn't need to be stagnant.
So let's let that happen and we'll get Kara to help modify it with Burn to get it on the website.
Did I get a second to that motion? I think I did.
Yes, you did.
Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Carry's. I will add that to the email as well going out to... Do you want to be included on that, Mr. Bubus?
Please.
Because you're going to ask for it eventually, right?
Well, Kara was going to send it, but I don't care who sends it.
Email?
Jack's Bubus at Gmail.
At Gmail?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further new business to come for the group? I'm kind of freaking out a little.
Just go with it.
All right. No, don't, don't...
Don't muddy the waters.
That's right. Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I have one. From Meredith Nichols from OEM. She said, "The public comment period for the Pilt funding project for the Cornau Verde has passed, and OEM will continue with the RFP process."
Okay. Yeah. That was, I don't remember the exact day we posted that, but it was late November, early December.
It ended like the sixth or seventh or something.
Before we turn, tonight, the Wetmount Fire Protection District is having a meeting at six o'clock. They're going to talk about the fire truck at Cornau Verde, if you have any interest. I just want to remind you that that's available.
Six at the...
It's at the firehouse.
Firehouse, yeah.
Yeah. Got that on my calendar. Thank you.
I do, too.
Anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn?
I've got one thing.
Go ahead, sir.
Based on what Jorgen was talking about, House Bill 19-1087, Colorado House Bill, which was, when it was effective, August 2 of last year. I'll just summarize this, but it says, "The current law requires local governments to post notices at public meetings in physical locations." This act that's now in effect allows local governments to post notices just on the local government's website. This actually has nothing to do with the legal publications. Legal, because there was never required to post notices of meetings in the newspaper, just post them in three different places in the county. But that's eliminated, and now they're saying that it can be done by just posting the notices of the meeting and the agenda on a website. But I think you're still allowed, you certainly can go ahead and post them the way you've been doing.
1086 was the bill number?
19-1087.
Interesting.